Good evening. I hope you felt welcomed tonight by information technology manager Ned Huta and our planning director, Stephen Spraker. They served as the greeters for the December 15th, 2020 regular city commission meeting of the city of Ormond Beach. We are in our chambers and it is 7:00 PM. I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you this evening to my right and your left. It's recording secretary Cassidy Ritz. Next is city attorney Randy Hayes. Commissioner Dwight Selby, Zone 1.
Good evening.
Commissioner Troy Kent, Zone 2.
Good evening.
To my left and your right, our deputy mayor and Zone 3 Commissioner Susan Persis. Commissioner Rob Littleton from Zone 4. We have the chiefs, police and fire. Down in front, we have our city manager Joyce Shanahan, our assistant city manager Claire Whitley, our city clerk Colby Solinto, and for those of you listening online, Mayor Bill Partington. If you would, please make sure in silence your cell phones. We will rise for the invocation given by Chaplain Sam Mercado from Advent Health, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
God of hope and love, through your mercy, we have made it to this final month of this year 2020. Thank you for watching over each of us and our city of Ormond Beach. Tonight, we also lift up to you our mayor and city leaders, and thank you for watching over them and giving them wisdom and guidance in handling the business and concerns of our city and its people. Bless this meeting tonight and guide the decisions that will be made. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now is the point in the meeting where we have presentations and proclamations, and we have a couple special recognitions this evening. The Crime Stoppers Volusia County Officer of the Year is Ormond Beach Police Detective Ryan Mahalco. This is a very special award. There are 16 cities in Volusia County, and most of them have their own police agencies. So the competition is fierce. The Seventh Judicial Circuit is Volusia, Flagler, Putnam and St. John's. Flagler, Putnam and St. John's have two or three agencies, so, and they're, they're small. Each county has two or three generally small departments, except for the sheriff's departments there are rather large. But those awards, you're one out of three, maybe four agencies. So your odds are better of winning there. Ormond Beach competes with 15 other entities, including the sheriff's department. And so the competition is really fierce. And every year, most if not all of us go to the dinners to support our department. We always believe we have the best officer there. We want them to win. And this year, figures it's a pandemic year, but this year, Officer Mahalco did bring home the award, and that's fantastic. So I'd like to introduce Volusia County Crime Stoppers Board President Stephen Bares, who's going to present the award and ask Officer Detective Ryan Mahalco and his family to come forward to accept that, and we'll have the, have the presentation. Stephen may have some other board members with him. Come on up.
Members of the commission, I'd like to thank you first off for allowing us to make the presentations during our board meetings and because of everything that's been going on in 19, we felt that it was very important to recognize those officers in front of everybody, even though we wouldn't have thanked them. Mayor, you took my entire speech away, so it's going to be very short. I'd like just to see God greetings. Say a few virtually.
Thank you, Mr. Bares and Allison. You were, thank you so much, Crime Stoppers Commission and Mayor. As you know, the backstory of all this, it was a horrific homicide of a young baby gay man, and Ryan investigated it. And if you, if anyone knows anything about law enforcement, one of the worst cases you ever run into work is the death of a child. And I'm so thankful and honored that you worked for us and you handled that and had a successful prosecution on that. And you also worked diligently after that to lock up the serial rapist who was victimizing a woman in our community and in the local area. So I can't be prouder. We're blessed to have you. Thank you for sharing them with us. And I'll turn the microphone over to Pastor Steve.
So Detective, on behalf of Crime Stoppers, I'd like to present you with this 2020 Volusia County Officer of the Year plaque. Thank you very much for your service. And in addition to the flag, Crime Stoppers is one of these Florida, partnered up with Florida by exchange, and they would like to present you with the Glock 9 role leader, Elliot Christen.
Get everybody you want in for a picture and take as many pictures as, as you'd Planning and Zoning Association's Outstanding Innovation and Design Award, and our Public like.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Works Director Sean Finley is going to be accepting that on behalf of not only himself, Congratulations. All right. but, but all of our staff that work so hard on this particular project. The Florida Planning and Zoning Association is awarding Ormond Beach and dredging and marine consultants their Outstanding Innovation and Design Award for the Casson Park and Breakwater Project. This project designed and constructed an ADA compliant concrete floating dock system to accommodate 12 vessels, dredged the basin to enhance boater safety and navigation, installed 7,900 square feet of limestone breakwater to protect the existing pier and new floating dock system. The breakwater serves as a proactive measure to mitigate storm surge and wave impacts to the replacement pier, waterway access points and new floating dock system. And the breakwater is a prime example of resiliency preparedness and innovation as it uses hybrid engineering approaches to protect community infrastructure from worsening storm events and mitigates destruction from wave activity. I think I've covered most of it, Sean, but I'll let you say a few words about, about the award, and then we want to get a picture with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a great award for our staff. We couldn't have done it without the previous city engineer, John Noble. I wouldn't, I would be very remiss if I didn't mention him and, and the input we got from our Main Street. This is an asset to our community, and it's been very well received, and we're very proud to have done it for the city. And then, and I think it's something that we've gotten some of the best feedback on, on any project that we've done, and it, it just goes to show what, what we can do when we work together and, and come up with a good project. Thank you.
Congratulations on the award winning. This time, we'll move to audience remarks and start with Bill Denny.
Yes, sir. I'm Bill Denny, 1027 North Halifax, and I'm here representing Civil Discourse, Part 2, Common Ground. After a month, several months of, in recess because of the virus, we've started Common Ground through Zoom, and the goal is to bring various interests of citizens, to developer interests, to city planners, concerned citizens, environmentalists together to come up with a win-win solution, to actually think of something innovative, and through a series of talks. I'm here tonight to thank the city for their engagement and support. First, I wanted to thank Commissioner Persis. She attended several of our planning and brainstorming sessions initially to get, get back on track and how we could achieve some of these goals. We also had Mayor Henry from State on the Beach contribute and come in and give us some comments to kind of focus us. So we just wanted to thank you for your input. Last night, we had a session, and we wanted to thank Stephen Spraker, who participated and helped. The goal was to explain how citizens could get engaged earlier into the process, what's available, what reports are out there and the information, and then to have more influence and feel better about the whole process. So we really thank Stephen for his years of experience and able to relay that information to our participants. And then last, I wanted to thank that one of the key components of civil discourse is using as much energy to listen as to speak. So I wanted to thank Mayor Partington for listening in on two of our first sessions and hear some of the concerns of the citizens and their input. After a holiday break, we hope to begin January the 11th at 6:30 on Monday and maybe get in a routine every other week until we come up some ideas. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you for all the work you've put into that. Next is Jim Schultz.
Jim Schultz, 117 Harvard. A lot of times I think I know what I'm going to talk about, come up here and I flip-flop a little bit, not on positions, just on direction. Going to mention the new Pfizer vaccine, messenger RNA, brand-new technology, sort of. Actually, they've been trying to use it for decades. They hadn't been successful yet, but they were hoping they were going to get that way because a lot of times it takes five, 10, 20 years to develop vaccines. So far, they've been a failure, except for this one. This one, in less than a year, they've managed to run the tests on it on, you know, tens of thousands of people, and they're all healthy people. They decided to avoid any risk of damaging people that had immune disorders or were high risk, and thus, they didn't really test those when now they'll get to test them out in the real, real world and see what happens. But again, they talked about 90% and 40, 94 and a half percent effective. Translated, well, it means something different than what it sounds like. It sounds like these are really great, you know, that you're going to have this really great protection. Well, it, it actually comes out to be, it takes 167 people to get the vaccine to have one less case in the 90%, the 90, well, I mean, in the 94 and a half, and 256 in the other one. So it's not as, you know, when you have 250-some people and one less person, it's not as a hit as you might think. But let's hope it is, because we're going to be discovering it in real-world experiences. And the thing is, like the Pfizer one, it is a new technology, and polyethylene glycol is how they protect that little strand of synthetic RNA, messenger RNA. And the reason they had to protect it is because it wouldn't get to your, through your system, and that's why it has to be frozen. But the sad thing about polyethylene glycol, it's a derivative of anaphryse, and 70% of the population is actually, has a reaction to it. But hey, we'll work that out later, I guess.
Thank you, Jim. Next is the approval of the minutes from the December 1st, 2020 city commission meeting. Does anybody have any additions, deletions or corrections?
I'll move the minutes of December 1st.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and we'll show those passed unanimously. And now the consent agenda. Does anyone, any member wish to pull an item from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And does any commissioner wish to comment? Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment on a couple of items. Item E is the acquisition of six radios for the new police cruisers that we're buying. And, you know, you might, might be surprised to know that these radios cost over $5,000 each. So it's a $31,000 expenditure to buy six radios, but glad to see the new cruisers and, and the new equipment. Item F is the acquisition of, for this, for the fire department, two thermal imaging cameras, five 60-minute cylinders. These are breathing apparatus, I guess similar, they're called SCBA, similar to scuba tanks, you know, so that firemen can have oxygen to breathe when they're in a dangerous situation, and 36 30-minute cylinders. And this is a total price of $51,000. That's the bad news. The good news is 90% of that is being paid by the Department of Homeland Security, so the city's contribution is roughly $5,000, or 10% of the total cost. And the final, the final thing I wanted to comment on is the, is item I, which is the legislative agenda package, legislative priorities. We are asking the state of Florida, we're putting in five requests for a total of $7.6 million. And two of those projects are out at the airport business park, the new road that would extend, that would go into Pineland Trail, so there'd be a second way into the airport business park, and a, and a perimeter road in the business park. And the other three projects are related to reclaimed water and waste, and the wastewater treatment plant. The biggest single, the single biggest one is UV disin, ultraviolet disinfection system for the wastewater, or we, I guess we now call it a water reclamation facility, not a wastewater treatment plant. And that's 3 million bucks. This is going to be a tough year to get any funding out of the state because the state revenue is down significantly because of COVID. However, we do have a lot of friends who are in high places right now. Tom Leek being very active in formulating the budget, Representative Tom Renner, who represents part of our area also. We have some friends in high places, and if we don't get significant funding this year, we may get it next year or the year after. So I'm, I just wanted to say thank you to the staff for putting this package together, Brian Rodamacher in particular, our economic development director, and I will, I personally will work hard. I'll be up there at least once, maybe twice, to help, you know, lobby these things through. So thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you for pointing those out. Anyone else? Good deal. We will move to 8A public hearings, and I will open the public hearings and ask the city clerk to read 8A by title, please.
Ordinance number 2020-53, an ordinance amending paragraph C, official zoning map of section 2-01, established of Article 1, establishment of zoning districts and official zoning map of Chapter 2, District and General Regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code. By amending the official zoning map to rezone a certain parcel of real property totaling approximately 8.2 acres located southeast of 1255 North US Highway 1, a portion of Volusia County parcel number 4206-00-00-0020, from R5 multi-family medium density to PRD planned residential development, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2020-53, read by title only.
Thank you. Colby, the only card I have is from the applicant. Just need a motion and a second. Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions for the applicant? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 8B.
Ordinance number 2020-54, an ordinance approving a planned residential development to be known as Ormond Grand on approximately 8.2 acres located, generally located south and east of 1255 North US Highway 1, authorizing the issuance and execution of a development order for 60 multifamily townhouse units and associated site improvements, providing conditions and expirations of approvals and providing an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2020-54, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I do not have any cards.
I move approval of ordinance number 2020-54.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And 8C.
Ordinance number 2020-56, an ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city of Ormond Beach by amending the future land use map to change the designation of one parcel of real property totaling 6.40 plus or minus acres located at 36 North Timber Creek Road, Volusia County Property Appraiser parcel number 4125-00-00-0221, from Volusia County Environmental System Corridor, ESC, and Urban Low Intensity, ULI, to Ormond Beach Open Space Conservation, OSC, and Residential Office Retail, ROR, providing for conflict, authorizing transmittal and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2020-56, read by title only.
Thank you, and I'll ask our planning director, Stephen Spraker, to present this item.
Good evening. My name is Steve Spraker. I'm planning director of the city. This is a request for a land use map, a 30, land use map amendment at 36 North Timber Creek Road. The subject area is shown here in the hashed area, kind of the Pac-Man parcel eating the stormwater pond. This is North Timber Creek Road here. It is part of a larger development called Timber Creek Shops. So this would be the entire Timber Creek Shops. The item before you tonight is solely for the land use, so every parcel has a land use and a zoning. So based on annexation, the city is required to assign a land use to this parcel of land. The goal is to assign the most similar to what Volusia County had. The parcel is split into two land uses in Volusia County. So there's the Environmental Systems Corridor, which is proposed to go to Ormond Beach Open Space and Conservation. So really, there'll be no development here because of the tributary of the Timoca River running through the rear of the property here. The bottom 3.2 acres currently has urban low intensity land use in Volusia County. This allows both residential and commercial uses. City staff looked at the various type of commercial land uses Ormond Beach has, the most logical would have been going to go to the general commercial. However, the general commercial allows more density and intensity than the county land use allowed. So we drop back to the residential office retail, which has a similar density and a similar intensity to the urban low intensity. When the item was reviewed by the planning board on June 11th, they recommended approval of 6 to 0. Staff is also recommending approval. The rezoning will be on a separate track. They did have a neighborhood meeting. The planning board date for that plan development has not been established yet. So tonight is only for the land use amendment, and if there are any questions, if you want to have the answer.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you. Good job. Next, the card I have is from the applicant's attorney, Glenn Storch.
For the record, my name is Glenn Storch, and I, first of all, this, the applicant, in this case, it's not really the applicant because this is an administrative designation. The applicant for the annexation agrees with, with the staff recommendation. As you can see, this piece was originally a larger piece. It was, a, a large part of it was taken by the, by the county to provide for storm water. That's that, that indentation right there. That's the problem with this piece. So there's, it really, it's not a standalone piece. It can't be used for anything else. It has to be something where it would tie in to the adjoining piece, which is the southern piece, the commercial piece. Typically, what I would request is that this be commercial, because it should be part of the same. However, in this particular case, even though Steve is indicating that this is better as a, as the, as residential office and retail, we're okay with that. It's, it's a transitory use, but we can still use it and combine it with something else as we're developing the rest of the commercial parcel, so we're okay with it. But the piece itself cannot be used as a standalone piece. Does, I don't even think you can get access to it as a standalone piece. You have to tie it into that commercial piece. So, but again, and I'm, and my client is right here, and he'll, he'll confirm the same thing. We have no objections to staff recommendations and no objections to the administrative designation of comp plan. As you know, once you annex a piece, you do have to find a comp plan designation for it. And so this is what the, what staff has done fine. This is what planning board has recommended. We're okay with it, and the landowner is okay with it as well. And now as to the zoning, I should point out while I'm here, we will be working on that. That's a long-term process. That's a PUD. That's a development, I mean, a, a contract and an agreement between the city and the landowner and taking into account neighborhood concerns. We, we will be working on that. Until that comes, until we're done with that, that will not be coming back to you. So this is only for the comp plan, for this one piece that's next.
Thank you, Mr. Storch. Any questions for Attorney Storch?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next is Richard Weiss.
The purpose of speaking at this meeting is not to prevent the developer and builder from profiting from their venture to build homes, but to limit the scope of the construction, which will negatively and irreversibly impact others. Currently, the proposed plan will allow for 300 apartments with an average of 2.5 residents per apartment, which would increase the number of inhabitants by 750. This is the equivalent of taking 1.7% of the population of Ormond Beach and placing them in a few buildings adjacent to the little Timoca River and within a stone's throw of many homes. There are multiple single-family homes in this area. We're okay with it and the landowner is okay with it as well. And now as to the zoning, I should point out while I'm here, we will be working on that. That's a long-term process. That's a PUD. That's a development, I mean, a, a contract and an agreement between the city and the landowner and taking into account neighborhood concerns. We, we will be working on that. Until that comes, until we're done with that, that will not be coming back to you. So this is only for the comp plan, for this one piece that's annexed.
Thank you, Mr. Storch. Any questions for Attorney Storch?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
The purpose of speaking at this meeting is not to prevent the developer and builder from profiting from their venture to build homes, but to limit the scope of the construction, which will negatively and irreversibly impact others. Currently, the proposed plan will allow for 300 apartments with an average of 2.5 residents per apartment, which would increase the number of inhabitants by 750. This is the equivalent of taking 1.7% of the population of Ormond Beach and placing them in a few buildings adjacent to the little Timoca River and within a stone's throw of many homes. There are multiple single-family homes in this area and a recent petition dated December 14, 2020, contains 1,921 signatures, which is 4.4% of the population of Ormond Beach and Reed's. We have major concerns about the impact of the proposed high-density Timber Creek Apartments located at the northwest of the intersection of West Granada Boulevard and Timber Creek Road. This development is not compatible with adjacent established residential areas of single-family homes and will negatively impact these property owners to the northeast and west. We are also concerned about the traffic from such a high-density development. We request that the density be downsized and only single-family homes be permitted. Furthermore, we request that low-impact development principles be used rather than wholesale clearcutting of trees and large retention ponds. We believe it is important to preserve the natural beauty of the land. The number of individuals who have signed the petition to limit the scope of development far exceeds the number of individuals who live in the apartments. It boils down to the fact that we all moved here to live in a small town and want to preserve the serene environment which brought us here. The current project is felt to be potentially ruinous for what so many of us cherish. Other compelling reasons are the fact that this would take place adjacent to the little Timoca River and occupy its wetlands. I've lived here for 27 years and have seen in our backyard deer, bear, peacocks, wild boar, turkey, hawks, and otters, rabbits, and others. Preserving their habitat and lives is not only good for them, but we are equally the beneficiary. Knowing all this, I would propose that there be no exemption to allow for housing projects of this size. I would recommend something smaller with less environmental and personal impact. The project as currently proposed benefits few at the expenses, at the expense of many others and wants to accomplish cannot be undone. The residents at Ormond, at Moss Point oppose the amendment and request that the land remain Environmental System Corridor and Urban Low Intensity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. And I didn't know, Steve, do you want to address that at all? I just, we're not voting on a development tonight.
Correct. So what is before the commission tonight is basically the framework. So again, you have a land use within the comprehensive plan and you have a zoning. So the land use doesn't approve a site-specific project. What it does is provides densities and intensities similar to what was in Volusia County. So there will be time for all those comments and hopefully the applicant can work with the surrounding properties to resolve some of those issues before it comes back to planning board and commission. But tonight is solely for the land use, going from, again, Environmental Systems Corridor to Open Space Conservation. And then the lowest commercial land use category is the residential office and retail. For example, this would raise the floor area ratio from .5 to .7. It would also allow 32 units, an acre, if we went with the general commercial. So this is the lowest category that we have.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. And then Mr. Weiss's comments were, I've seen other mayors who would have ruled that, you know, stopped him from speaking and ruled that out of order just because it wasn't necessarily directly on point. But I appreciate the commission's patience in allowing him to speak and for his concerns to be heard. And I think that Mr. Storch had indicated they're going to be working with the neighbors on exactly these types of issues. So, you know, I, I don't have a problem. I guess it's important to hear what the concerns are and go from there. I'm not getting into a dialogue with you, sir. I'm just letting you know it was a courtesy to let you speak. I did not have to. So you're welcome, I guess is what I'll say to that. I don't have any other cards. Is there a motion in a second and then we'll have some discussion?
I actually, I wonder if I could ask a question of Stephen before we... Would you prefer a motion?
I don't mind if you want to ask Stephen right, right now.
So Stephen, when you say the density is comparable, I know it seems like you're sort of focused in on the floor area ratio, but not the number of units. Because when we go from the county land use, that's a total of 13 units, to the city's proposed density is 48 units. So we're looking at nearly quadrupling the density on this piece. I'm just curious, you know, how do we, how is that comparable?
So within, within the staff report, there's a detailed analysis of the infrastructure impact. So commercial land uses have much more impact to traffic, water, basically the, the infrastructure impacts. So when we do the analysis of how much, you know, those residential units will generate versus the commercial, the commercial will always have a larger impact. The other land use categories have a higher floor area ratio. So in essence, if we went to, for example, the general commercial, we'd be raising that floor area ratio and we'd be increasing the overall impact. So that, that was the rationale within the staff report.
So what if we went to, as Dr. Weiss suggested, what if we went to urban, I mean, I'm sorry, low-density residential, LDR?
The, the low, the low-density residential land use doesn't allow commercial uses. The existing Volusia County land use does allow commercial uses. So in essence, you're taking property rights away from the applicant. And if that's the direction of the commission, then we will certainly follow that.
Okay. Thank you. And that, that invites a lawsuit, I guess, Burt Harris.
I would let Randy address that if...
All right. Randy, or I guess the applicant's attorney wants to speak as well.
If, if, if I'm allowed. And again, the problem is, this is not a standalone parcel. You can't do a single-family on that parcel because there's not even any access to it. It has to be, and, and Steve is right. I mean, what happened is you've got commercial on the site. You can do commercial as a joint site. If you take this to a single-family designation, which by the way would start the process all over again, then you basically are taking and turning into a non-buildable parcel because you can't build it as a separate system because of the fact this is, everything else is commercial. So yes, this is a lower-density commercial. This is a lower-density designation as well. It's, it should be, in my way of thinking, a general commercial because it's attached, it should be attached to the other parcel. But this medium determination as to a low-density or lower-density and low FAR is okay with us. We can live with it and we can then incorporate that into whatever we do. We can, we can do it as some kind of office. We can do it as some kind of multifamily, a commercial village, something that will work together with the other parcel. That's what I'm, that's why this is acceptable. Because it's, it doesn't give us everything, but it does give us something that gives us a usable piece of property. If you put this into what you're saying, which is only single-family and take away our right to do any FAR, any commercial whatsoever, then that property is useless. And, and that is a problem. And again, I understand the concern that is out there as to whether or not, you know, that there's an issue as far as multifamily on the site. Don't forget, the rest of the site can be used for multifamily right now. I can put, right now, under the entitlements, I can put the same number of multifamily units in the commercial area. So this 3.2 parcel, although it's important from a planning standpoint, it's not the be-all, end-all. You're not going to, you're not going to take that commercial designation and turn that into single-family. I don't anticipate. I mean, I don't, I guess it's certainly possible you could do that, but if you did that, there, I mean, this thing has been commercial and designated at this, as this for over 20 years. So there are entitlements and there are land uses that, that the Jaffees have had on this site that they've been looking forward to using. If you look at this, as we go through this process and we will work with the neighbors, we will find ways to preserve the tree areas. We will find ways to lower the density to an appropriate amount. We will find ways to, to have the height that's appropriate. We'll find ways to create conservation areas and conservation buffers on this site. So it'll be perpetually, so all those vegetation that Dr. Weiss is talking about will be preserved perpetually. There's ways to make this work, especially with a PUD. And we will do it in such a way where the traffic actually will be generated, will be less than what would be taking place with a commercial. So there's, there's ways to do this. We won't come back to you until we have solved those problems. This is a single, small piece of property that is being annexed. And it's being annexed into the city, it's already annexed in the city. It has been somewhat destroyed because of that piece that's been chunked out by the, by the county for the stormwater. And so we're just looking for some reasonable comp plan designation. And this is only your first reading. If there's a problem down the road, you still have to have a second reading. This still goes through you again, this goes through management, this goes to the state. We, we have time to work this through. It's the way I look at it. But this is your staff recommendation, this is your planning board recommendation.
Good. Randy Hayes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Just want to quick point on the rezoning process after annexation. So after the annexation of property into a municipality, under Florida law, the county's land use and zoning regulations continue to apply until the, the city actually assigns a comp plan, I mean, a rezoning to the property consistent with the entitlements that enjoyed in while it was in the county. So the statute doesn't prescribe a date certain by which that has, that measure has to occur. But at some point, the property after annexation will need to be rezoned consistent with the uses and the regulations that enjoyed in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Commissioner Persis, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just have a kind of question comment. This is, I think, for the average person and maybe the residents that live out there. This is very, very, it's not easily understood. And I think the fear is to change this, it means that there's going to, to be, you know, apartments definitely there, you know, and that, and that's the fear out there because they, that these residents do not want it. I guess what I don't understand, and I've read the material, how can you say if you can't have, if this isn't passed, you can't, if you can't put the apartments there, but you, but you still, and you can't also put houses there, single-family homes? I don't under, I don't understand the difference.
Yeah, well, the difference is because single-family homes, for instance, on the commercial designation that you've got there are not allowed. Single-family homes are not...
In that, in that small area?
No, they're not allowed in the red area. That's the adjoining parcel. That's the parcel that's part of this, that will be part of this parcel. The small turquoise area, the turquoise area there, right now, single-family is permitted, but so is commercial. You don't have a designation that allows for both, other than what Steve is recommending. So if you, if you did what Commissioner Selby was asking about, if you only, if you gave it a designation that only allowed single-family, then you've taken away that commercial aspect of it. That's the problem. So we've been trying to find a, a middle point where we could have some commercial, some potential housing, but nothing, and to answer your question, nothing guarantees the right to put, your comp plan today, nothing guarantees the right to put multifamily on the site. That's, it's still going to have to go through a PUD. We're going to have to come back to you. We're going to have to work with the neighbors. You're going to have, we're going to have to go to the planning board. You will have that right to make that determination as to whether we've done that correctly.
So what could we do to change it so it would be single-family homes in that area? Would we have to like go back to square one?
You'd have to start over again on, on that site. But again, if you do that, you're taking a piece of property and you're probably, A, taking away the commercial use. So that's an, an issue. But secondly, you're taking it, you're using a piece of property that has no other use. It, I don't think you can even put single-family on that site because of the access, because of the way that the stormwater has now been scooped out. It needs to be part of this part, of this parcel to the south.
Well, I, I mean, I'm not sure totally, I totally agree with that, but I, I know there's a huge issue, whether it's commercial apartments or single-family, about, about, you know, going in and out of the area. The, the traffic there is terrible.
Agreed, agreed. And, and those things will have to be addressed during the, the PUD stage. We will have to deal with that traffic area, traffic issue. By the way, from a planning standpoint, if you did this, you've got, you would have commercial right next to single-family with no buffer in between. That doesn't make any sense from a planning standpoint either, even if you could use this parcel and get access to it. So there's some issues here as to why this is the right thing to do. I think Steve, and from a planning standpoint, this is the right thing to do from a comp plan, cut, you know, 30,000 square feet or 30,000-foot view of planning. From that point, it then goes to the zoning. And when you get to the zoning, the PUD, then we have to work out the issues that you're talking about, the, the traffic issues, the buffer issues, the, the vegetation issues. All those things have to be worked out before you're going to be satisfied, I guarantee, and you could vote for it.
And, you know, of course, the concern is what type of commercial and we, we don't know that. So that's a, that's a big question mark. So, you know, that just concerns me.
Well, the, the, again, the, the red section, the, the main parcel, which is not the subject of tonight, that's any type of commercial. It's general commercial. So Costco, Target, whatever comes in, that could, that's what that could be. Again, with far less vegetation preserved than is being suggested by that PUD. So there's things that we can look at, but it's a trade-off. The, if you look at residential office retail, I think that has some different standards than general commercial.
Thank you.
All right. And again, this is, Steve is, I, I think he's done a good job. This is not what I would have suggested. I would have suggested it be all part of general commercial, but we're okay with this, this middle approach.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question for Stephen. Stephen, the other parcel, the big parcel, have we, we haven't done the land use on that yet, right?
The, the land use is existing. So the general commercial land use allows a floor area ratio of .7 and allows 32 units per acre.
So that's already been annexed?
That red is already within the city.
Got it.
So all they're doing is taking this section from the county to the city and then it'll go through a separate zoning action.
And, and these are separate tax parcels because they've been separate tax parcels for a very long time?
Correct. And then the county came and took the stormwater portion for the widening of Timber Creek Road.
Right. Got it. Okay.
Which impacted the buildability of this land.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval, ordinance number 2020-56.
All right. Second. I'll second it for discussion purposes. And Commissioner Littleton, I'll let you go first.
Sure. I know there's going to be sort of a lot of discussion about what comes down the pike here. I don't believe this action right now that we're doing right here is where that big, heated discussion and battle needs to be. So that's why I'm for passing the motion.
Understood. Anyone else wish to comment? I, Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I met with the Moss Point homeowners also and walked the site. And of course, I know the, I know Mr. Jaffe and I know, of course, I know Glenn Storch very well, although I, and I did speak to Mr. Jaffe about this quite a while ago, about this particular project quite a while ago. You know, the neighbors, not only in Moss Point, but also in breakaway trails, are, are very concerned about intense commercial development, whether it's retail or multifamily, and, and the impact on the environment as well as traffic. And I, I can just tell you that right now that the preliminary site plan that I saw showed access through the existing access points that really provide to the Walgreens. And that looks wholly inadequate to me. Thank you for not gaveling me down, Mayor, because I know this is totally off-topic. But I just want you guys to know, I might vote for this tonight. I haven't decided. I really think we don't have an option. I really think we have to approve this. And this, this change in land use, but I think you, I think you got a real uphill battle on, on, on doing something as intense as you want to do with the access that you have. So I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby. Anyone else? Commissioner Persis.
Yeah, I, I also wanted to say I met with the wonderful people at Moss Point and they had some wonderful, we had some wonderful discussions and I agree with Commissioner Selby. It's going to be a huge uphill battle because the, the traffic, the, the access roads and everything, the environmental issues, just the whole issue of multifamily dwellings right in that area is not totally... right in that area is not totally appealing to me at all. So, I'm not sure how I'm gonna vote tonight, but I, I think maybe I'm, this is not my background as far as this kind of land use, and I appreciate hearing the other comments. But I, I, I just wanted to say, I, I'm really siding with the residents of the Moss Point development right now.
Good deal. And I know we're required to assign the closest land use as to what the county had offered. I know generally with a residential use versus a commercial use, you're talking anywhere from eight to ten times less traffic with the residential use. And so, my concern is we have to be careful what we ask for, because what we end up getting could be far worse than what we might have had the opportunity to negotiate for. And so, that's why I support this tonight, I agree with Commissioner Littleton, this is just an administrative rezoning, this isn't the actual development proposal, that'll be coming to us down the road, but six to ten times less traffic on a project versus what could be on that property, you got my attention right there. And I want to hear the rest of the details and have the rest of those details go through the planning and development process, and then ultimately, if it makes it that far, come to us for a decision. And if it's something that's gonna be six to ten times less traffic, that would seem to be a huge benefit for that area. So, that's why I'll support it tonight on first reading, and we will either go from there or not go from there. But anybody else have anything else? Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
No.
Commissioner Persis?
No.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and we will close the public hearings and move to 9A.
Ordinance number 2020-55, an ordinance amending Section 22-115 Fee Imposed Schedule of Chapter 22, Waters and Sewers of the City of Ormond Beach Code of Ordinances. By increasing the water and sewer service impact fees, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2020-55, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby. I don't have any cards on this one.
I'll move ordinance 2020-55.
Second?
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and 10A.
Resolution number 2020-119, a resolution approving an application by SCI Funeral Services of Florida LLC, Doing Business and Also Known As Volusia Memorial Park and Funeral Home, and authorizing the issuance and execution of a development order, authorizing the use of a refrigeration cooler on a temporary basis as a temporary structure on that property located at 548 North Nova Road, Ormond Beach, Florida. Said property being situated within the B1 Professional Office/Hospital Zoning District, waiving the bond requirements, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2020-11, or 199, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby, and I'll ask Planning Director Stevens-Brecker to speak on this item as well.
Good evening, this is a request for a temporary structure. Our code requires that this is reviewed by the Site Planner/View Committee and the City Commission. The location of the funeral home is at 548 North Nova Road. This is the Nova Recreational Center here, and this is the cemetery at 550. There are no residential properties in and around this side of the street. The area of the proposed temporary cooler is located immediately behind the funeral home, located right here in a couple of parking spaces, so that the, the building will screen where the temporary cooler is requested. They're also putting a fence around the cooler for both for security and screening, so again, it's behind the building, and then it's fenced. Part of the Land Development Code standards requires a bond in talking with the Site Planner/View Committee and the city engineer. Our concern is we don't want to take a bond and then the city be responsible for moving a structure. We'd much rather go through a code enforcement process if by some chance they go beyond what they're asking for. The temporary nature is to be twelve months, and again, it doesn't, abut residential use. Staff is recommending approval, and I believe the applicant is here to address the commission.
She is, if needed. I don't know if there's any questions, but Commissioner Persis?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. I just had some questions. I drove by your place today just to look at this area, and it looks like where, where the cooler would be, it looks like it's, would be pretty much in plain sight. I'm not sure what the fencing would, would look like, could you explain that to me?
Yes, it, it would be in plain sight, only in the back of the building, and it's going to be, it's proposed to be a PVC-type architectural, so it's not an eyesore, if you will, that will be locked or secured.
Can you see through the fence?
No.
Okay, so it would be like, okay. Because I, I went both ways, I guess it would be south and north, and, you know, and I can envisage it, because I saw the picture, it, it just looks like, you know, you could see it. I was wondering if there would be a way you could maybe get some, put some temporary trees, like in planters or something around it, just so it wouldn't look, you know, like a, a cooler?
Well, and I, I agree. Our goal is for it to not be offensive to anybody, and we want to give all due respect to those that are visiting our, our business or services, and those that are coming in from hospitals, nursing homes, et cetera. So, privacy is utmost importance to us. We're not opposed to making it aesthetic also.
Yeah, I, I think that, that would be something that I would really like to see, because you can be, like, in the recreation area, I mean, you can be visiting your, you know, deceased loved ones, and, and you can still see that, that area. So, that was, that's my concern, basically. I mean, if you, if that's something that you need and you are planning to build this later and make it a permanent area?
We are, we're currently looking at two options. One is to stay within our roof line and use existing rooms inside. The other option would be coming off the parking lot, which of course, we'd have to get appropriate approval from the city. It would, those are being reviewed and designed by our committee or our department to make sure that that's appropriate for any zoning requirements.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Brenda, I just, or Stephen, either one, I appreciated Commissioner Persis's questions, I just don't have a good comfort level based on the answers. So, that white PVC fence is gonna be on all three sides, up, abutting the building, so you can't see it when you turn in to go have your baseball, kids' baseball game, you can't see it on the north side when you're visiting a deceased relative. I thought I heard you say you could see it if you were on the west side, and that, that was a little concerning.
Because of the location, the closest residential area is Talacoa, and because of our landscaping and the current trees there, you would not be able to see it, and some development that we have of large mausoleum buildings. Currently, regardless, because of the berm on the south side of the property between the ball fields and us, we can't see, they can't see us now currently as it is. But yes, it would be completely covering this. It's a refrigeration, I really don't like the word cooler, but unit, if you will, that, you know, it's, it's not some dilapidated, beat-up item, but certainly, we would cover it for security and for aesthetic reasons. So, no, you could not see it from the south. You can see it now if we were working today.
Okay. And Stephen and Randy, how do we make sure that it can't be seen and that it is aesthetically pleasing?
I believe we could add a requirement based on the commission's directive to put some landscaping to, to screen it. They can work with our city landscape architect and come up with a plan, and then they'll inspect it once it's installed.
Okay. I mean, I want to make it as convenient and easy for you as possible, but I really think it should have, I mean, white PVC fence is not wicked expensive. I think you should have that on all three sides, and that way, there's no question. And then if you want to add landscaping or something like that additionally, I'd be okay. Deputy Mayor, or Commissioner Kent? Do that a bunch.
All right. Mr. Specker, questions for you? I read it in the report, but I want to hear it on the public record. Twelve months max?
Twelve months max, and then it would go to code enforcement, or they would have to come back to the city commission and state why, why it should be extended.
Right. So, there's my concern, okay, is, you know, we, we allow something for twelve months, and then the applicant, applicant comes back. The good news is, we're gonna be sitting up here together for two years, this group of elected officials, anyway. But, you know, my concern is that twelve months turns into twenty-four months, but I guess we'll cross that bridge whenever we get there. I'll tell you what jumped in my mind, Commissioner Selby, was when you took the lead with the, the business, some, some actually said we were not business-friendly with that window business on US-1, and they wanted to have those temporary containers out there for X amount of time, and you, very effectively and eloquently, were able to whittle that down. And, you know, I, I've got to tell you, I'm, I'm not crazy about the idea, but I want my city to help you. I understand it's, it's a problem. So, I, I would, my comfort level would be much higher if we went below twelve months to kind of incentivize you to make those permanent changes rather expeditiously. So, I guess now the question will go to you. What are the concrete plans? Because, you know, it sounded earlier, you were kind of, well, if we do this, or if we do that, and when I hear, well, if we do this, or we do that, that tells me you really don't have any concrete plans.
We have, as I mentioned, two proposals that we're looking at. We're really trying not to change our roof line in our building and working with space within, but I, telling you that would not address future growth, and then I'd be here in four or five more years now wanting to bump out my building. So, we're trying to also be proactive in planning ahead. There is, are particular companies that deal with medical examiner, funeral home, mortuary coolers that are accustomed to this, and we've gotten a timeframe anywhere, depending which plan we pick, if we're gonna use existing building that we have inside, or if we bump out. The longest, nine months. I'm asking for twelve, just for that buffer. Personally and professionally, I don't even want to have a temporary structure there at all.
Right.
But the, our business needs have asked, asked for that. So, out of my due diligence, I, I will oversee that that is taken care of appropriately.
Right. And I'm gonna tell you, I teach my son every day, say what you mean and mean what you say. And I try to live by that as much as, as I, as I absolutely can. And I'm gonna tell you something that I mean. I will approve this tonight, but I'm telling you, if this comes back in twelve months, I will be kicking and screaming up here about not approving it any longer than that. Like, it's my, my total deadline, ultimate amount is twelve months, because I want to help you be successful.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioner.
Anyone else? Stephen or Randy, do we need to, I mean, the, the recommendation says approve a screened slash secured temporary cooler. Do you need anything else added to a motion to make sure that it's screened on all three sides?
Well, I'm gonna let, I'll give you some of my suggestions, and then I'll let the planning director add, add to that. You'll want to add, as part of your motion, a requirement for them to add additional landscape material, and planning director can address that as well. I would recommend that, in terms of the, excuse me, the, the timeline, that we phrase the condition, the duration, rather, such that it is a time period not to exceed twelve months, continuous months, or upon the issuance of a certificate of occupancy regarding the improvement, whichever event occurs first. That way, if the improvement is done before the twelve-month time period, then it's done. If it's nine months, it's nine months, or six months, it's six months. So, that'll kind of shorten the window a little bit, so we could, that's a pretty easy fix. The screening material, excuse me, is something that Stephen can better address than, than I can, but I would be as specific as possible for purposes of the, of the development order.
Randy, may I, may I ask? Thank you, Mayor. So, when they get this cooler there, they would, the same day, would the fencing go up and the, and then the landscaping, can it all, I mean, is there a time limit?
You, you could add, you, you could add that as conditions, you could be very specific on your conditions for this, purposes of this development order, to require that all of the screening materials be in place prior to the installation of the, of the refrigeration cooler, excuse me. So, we can make, we can make that work for you that way, if you want to make that all part of the motion.
Thank you.
And Stephen, did you have any specific recommendations for the motion maker as far as the, either the screening or the landscaping?
No, I think Randy's motion covered it, and then basically the white PVC fence to, to screen the cooler.
Did you want to make, Deputy Mayor make that motion?
Okay, I move approval of item 10A, Resolution 2020-199, and want to add that they have fencing on all three sides and landscaping on all three sides, no later than by the time the refrigeration unit is installed.
And as far as the twelve consecutive months?
And no more than twelve consecutive months.
All right. Is there a second to that?
Or, including the, or the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, whichever event occurs first.
We just say what Randy said.
Just what Randy said.
Is there a second for that?
I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you, Dwight.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby. And Brenda, thank you for bringing this to us. We want you to be successful. I feel like by making these suggestions or requirements, hopefully, we're helping you avoid problems down the road, and, because it can be a touchy subject for people, so this will be the, the best protection for all of us, I think. And with that, unless there's any other comments, Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and 10B, I'll ask Colby to read the resolution by title only, and then go to Randy.
Resolution number 2020-200, a resolution pertaining to that certain amended and restated ground lease agreement between the City and Riverbend Management Group of Florida LLC, regarding the operation of Riverbend Golf Course, making findings of fact determining Riverbend Management Group of Florida LLC to be in default of the lease agreement, proclaiming and directing the lease agreement to be terminated in the event the lessee fails to cure the default within the cure period, authorizing and directing the city manager and city attorney to take necessary and reasonable action to effectuate the termination of the lease agreement upon its termination, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2020-200, read by title only.
Thank you, Colby, and City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. And before you vote on the underlying motion, we'll have to first entertain a motion to waive the Thompson Rule, since this is a late-added item to the agenda. What we've prepared for you this evening is a resolution terminating the lease agreement for the Riverbend Golf Course. Because of the lessees' failure to pay rent for the months of September, October, and November, under the lease agreement, we're required to give them a notice of, written notice of default, which we've done, providing them an opportunity to cure that default within thirty days, which we've done. And the thirty-day cure period will expire December 29th. Based on recent information that the city manager has received and that my office has received, we believe it's unlikely that the lessee will cure the default by the December 29 cure period. And what we're asking the commission to do is we need to, in the event that they don't cure the lease agreement by the default date, then we'll need to terminate the agreement. We're asking the commission tonight to make the determination that if the lessee does not cure the default by December 29, that, that failure will be deemed to be a termination of the agreement. The reason that is important is we need to terminate the agreement before we reach January 1, because at that point, then the property becomes subject to additional taxes by the property appraiser. And of course, you know that we're in the middle of, of a dispute with the county and the property appraiser regarding the tax exemption and taxability of, of the property. We're confident in our position, notwithstanding the property appraiser's self-serving statements in the paper this morning. We'll address those separately. But what you have before you this evening is simply a resolution that would determine the lease to be terminated effective at 12:01 a.m. on December 30th, in the event- the lease to be terminated effective at 12:01 a.m. on December 30th, in the event they do not cure the default.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions for Randy? If not, I'll entertain a motion to waive the Thompson Rule.
Motion to waive the Thompson Rule.
Second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And now the underlying motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And we move to discussion items. 11A. I don't even know if there's anything for you to read, Colby. It's a, okay. Committee for Acquisition of Property with Environmental and Recreational Characteristics. We did receive one online comment in favor of this, suggesting a piece of property. I don't know exactly which, where, or, I mean, I know the location he cited, but that's something that would ultimately go through staff and be, I guess, considered by the committee. But anybody have any discussion? Deputy Mayor Persis.
Yes. Yes, I think it's a great idea. I think it will, you know, this could give us a broad-based support, you know, of these issues. It would be nice if maybe, you know, each commissioner could select a person to be on this committee, and the, you know, staff could pick some others, you know, in the city to be on it. I just think it would be something really beneficial for the city to get some citizen involvement with this area, and with, you know, some, you know, recreation parks, environmental issues. I think it's just, you know, a win-win for everybody.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anyone else?
I have a slight concern about the purpose of it, not per se, but I would like to add language that allows us to purchase strategic land. Not every piece of property may be specifically environmental or, you know, have recreational purposes. There could be land that Volusia Forever, Florida Forever, and the Trust in Public Land says, you know, isn't good enough for their money, sort of thing. And I still want our commission to have the ability to buy land that sort of preserves the characteristics of Ormond Beach. So, that's what I would want to add, language that talks about strategic property, too.
And City Manager Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, that's exactly the kind of direction we're looking for when we bring back to your resolution to form this committee. The idea is that it would be a committee versus a board. A committee is a short-term duration for the purpose identified here. And as you said, Commissioner Persis, the idea is to build a strong coalition, a community coalition around these issues of sensitive, environmentally sensitive lands and recreational or strategic lands that are important to preserving the character of our area. The idea would be for the committee members to identify, review, and prioritize these properties. Staff would assist them, just like they do the, any other board or committee, with that, you know, with pictures and maps and site visits if necessary. We would review, the committee would review the locations, evaluations, the availability for purchase, and then we would ask the committee to help to identify funding mechanisms, whether it's Volusia Forever, bond referendums, grant funds, federal, state, and local, or other revenue sources. And the committee composition is really something that you all need to concentrate on. At a bare minimum, I think you need to have five individuals here, maybe seven or nine, so that you each have an appointment, and maybe a few at-large appointments, and maybe from specific community groups, if you were so inclined. So, if you have any ideas about that, staff would like to learn that before we bring that back to you.
Anyone else? I think if each commissioner has a nominee, and then maybe two others that would be at-large that everyone would have to agree on, so you had a committee of seven, you don't want it to be too large, obviously. Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a great idea if the citizens of Ormond Beach want this, and I have no idea whether or not they want this. And so, what I don't like about this is that it's coming from us. It's coming sort of top-down. I don't see, I don't hear a whole lot of people out there saying, "We got to do this. We got to buy, there's land out there, we got to buy." I don't hear that. And without the money, you know, I just, I mean, I'm just concerned that this appears to be something that's driven by the city commission, forced onto the citizens, and that I think ultimately, we're, you know, if this is, if indeed there is a desire to do this, it's going to turn out like New Smyrna, where they do a bond issue, and the voters are going to, the voters are going to vote and decide whether or not they want to tax themselves. But it's my understanding that in New Smyrna, that was a very citizen-driven thing, that it came, you know, that the people out in the community said, "We got to do something", not the commission saying, "We got to do something," and then the citizens voted for it. So, that's my concern, is where is the impetus coming from? I don't hear, I don't, when I walk around the community, I don't have people coming up to me and saying, "We really got to make sure that we buy, you know, buy some more land and protect it." I don't hear that. So, that's my concern. I mean, if the, you know, I guess what I would prefer is put a group together and figure out whether or not that's what they think the voters want, you know, because if the voters don't support this, really what we're doing is, I mean, we don't need them to tell us, "We'll go apply for ECHO money," or "Go apply for Volusia Forever money." We know how to do that. We have grant writers at the city, right? So, do we need this group to tell us which parcels to buy, where to get the money? I don't, you know, you see what I'm saying? That's, those are my concerns. I'm just kind of laying it out there.
Understood. Anyone else? Deputy Mayor Persis.
I'm assuming, assuming that this has kind of come about because of the area around the loop, you know, and I think that is where this is coming from. And, you know, there are a lot of people out there concerned about that area, and they don't want to see any trees, any more tree, they don't want to see any disruption of that area. So, I guess I took it that this committee would be looking at the possibility of getting any other properties that had environmental and recreational characteristics, so that we could do something with them for our residents. So, that's kind of how I took it. I think you have a great point. I like what Rob said. I think that's why we're talking about this. So, I just think we need to be sensitive to the people that are concerned about the environment in our city, because there is a huge petition out there about, you know, the area around the loop. So, I, that's, you know, that's just my comment right now.
Thank you. Yep, and I see Commissioner Selby's point, but I believe the citizen committee solves that and addresses exactly the issues that you bring up, and then the voter referendum finalizes that decision by our residents saying, "Yes, we want to purchase this property," or, "No, we don't think that's a good deal. We don't want to purchase that property." After all the properties have been reviewed, analyzed, and prioritized from a recreational and/or environmental standpoint, I mean, there's so many properties out there. There's several around Central Park. There's Seminole and A1A, where you could have a beautiful, similar, maybe a little smaller, but similar to Andy Romano Beachfront Park. There's the old Advent property across the street. All or some of that may be for sale at some point that the city might want to consider, particularly just north of Beachside Johnny's, where you could have a parking area with a crosswalk that would lead directly to a public access point for the beach. That parcel should be considered. You've got the Tomoka Oaks Golf Course property. That parcel should be considered. You've got the Plantation Oaks property that's been discussed. You have properties north of there. I'm less comfortable, although maybe I could see a possibility of it, spending Ormond Beach residents' tax dollars outside of our jurisdictional boundaries, but maybe there are places where that would be appropriate. There certainly are several properties, you know, the one that the person recommended at Halifax and John Anderson, I really don't know all the details on that, but us just making that decision as a commission and saying, "We've decided this is the number-one priority," that goes directly to what you were saying, Commissioner Selby, of not having that public impetus, whereas a citizen committee confirmed by a referendum vote, after looking at all the different angles of each of these pieces of property, and, of course, we would make the final decision once it's all been prioritized and submitted to us, but this is basically a process that figures out a way to take multiple millions of dollars, and what's the best way to spend that for our community? What do our residents think is the most appropriate? This committee will hear from the residents. They'll have the opportunity to take submissions on property that's available. There's the Willmet to Nova Road property that's west or south of US-1, however you designate that. I mean, there's all kinds of little parcels that might be appropriate. New Smyrna went through this process, so we're not recreating the wheel, if you will. And then they still have several million dollars in their fund that they can spend on different parcels. They've spent a few million, but their residents very much wanted that and voted to do it. We will see, certainly, there's a lot of residents that want it. They want to see certain protections in place. This will tell us with the referendum vote whether our residents, just like with Andy Romano Beachfront Park, do they care enough about this to vote to approve them paying taxes to fund it? So, that's what I see it as.
I guess I'm still a little gun-shy from the half-cent sales tax. You know, we, what did we do? We said, "We think this is a good idea, and we're going to allow you to decide whether or not it's a good idea." It was a referendum. It's the most democratic way to make a decision possible. And what happened? The citizens voted it down handily, and they continue to blame us for, not everyone, but a lot of people continue to blame us for ever supporting it. What a dumb idea. So, I'm just, and I'm not trying to be political about it, I'm just trying to be realistic about it. That is, there is a certain amount of that mentality in the air nowadays, and that's my whole concern. I don't, my sense, just my sense, my sense is, there is not a huge groundswell of support to tax themselves, to raise more money, to buy land. There's a certain segment of the population, sure, that says it all the time, but why haven't those people started something like this? Why haven't they come forward? 61,000 people signed that petition. If each of them donated, you know, I don't know, $10, that'd be $610,000. You know, why didn't they do a GoFundMe? And, you know, raise a million bucks, get a couple of people to donate 20 bucks, you know? So, I'm just, that's where I'm coming from. I don't want, I'm not trying to be Negative Nelly on this thing, but I am, I want to be realistic, and what I'm concerned about is, this is really coming from us. It is not coming from, nobody came to the podium and said, "You guys really ought to do this," or at least, I mean, you know, there are a couple of people have said that, but the community hasn't really come forward saying that.
Mr. Mayor, it doesn't have to be merely a referendum. It can also be a way to prioritize applications for ECHO. So, I think there are different levels of funding that you can procure. So, it doesn't mean that they'll even recommend any kind of referendum, but the idea is to get the broad-based support for ECHO or Volusia Forever, because there's new money for that, to try to get some of that money in Ormond Beach and get the citizenry involved. But that's just.
And I like that. I like what you just said. And if I can make one other positive comment, actually, I don't think I made a positive comment yet. And the positive comment is, I love the fact that you've got this veteran and this grant that, you know, could potentially run this thing. I think it was 90 days or 120 days?
Like, through April 20.
Yeah, okay, which in my mind is not anywhere near long enough. Okay, but it's a way to get it started with somebody who sounds like they're incredibly capable and qualified, which is really cool. I really like that part of it. Thank you.
Did you need any other input from us?
I think I need, I'm not sure there's 100% support, so I would just, if you could, Mr. Mayor, ask for a vote for staff to bring something back. That would be helpful.
Great. If somebody wants to make a motion?
I move to approve.
Direct staff to bring.
Direct staff to bring information back.
All right. Deputy Mayor Persis has made the motion. Staff, of course, will incorporate the comments they've heard tonight, and then we'll have final say, I guess, on any, on anything you bring back. Is there a second to that? I'll second it. And with that, we'll call the vote. Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Can I make a comment?
Hold on just one sec. Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Selby, watch out. You're making common sense, man, and you're sharing it publicly. You dropped a lot of nuggets there that were well-received from this commissioner. And, yeah, you know what? I'll leave my comments with that.
Good deal. And I'll just say, two final comment. We have had a number of people come to us wanting to buy specific properties. This creates a fair process to assess those, prioritize those, analyze those, and help protect the city, and protect our residents, and make sure that this is what they want to do. And so, this is the best process or vehicle to allow that. So, I want to make sure we allow that to happen, for our residents' voices to be heard, and don't want to be part of not allowing that, and just kind of having a free-for-all piecemeal, particularly when it comes to spending millions of dollars, which buying property can be extremely expensive. So, I think it's important to have a valid process in place. And with that, Colby, please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Randy, can I vote, "We'll see"?
No, you got to vote, I think. This is just to have staff bring us something back, so you will see if you vote for it. And if you don't get enough votes, you won't see.
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't quite sure I had a response to that.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
No.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, thank you. And that brings us to reports, suggestions, and requests, and we start with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regardless of you deciding to move forward with this initiative, staff will still be utilizing that veteran that I spoke to you about. Part of their process for that veteran is to transition from the military into local government, because that's his area of interest. So, much like we do for other interns from FSU, or UF, or Stetson, or UCF, we send them through each department to get a broad understanding of those departments, to kind of give them a high-level overview. So, we're delighted to be selected for that program, and I think it'll be a win for that gentleman. He has family in Deland, or soon-to-be family in Deland, and he hails from Lakeland, so we're excited about that. So, a variety of things. This is your last meeting for the 2020 year. I think we'll all be glad when 2020 is over. Your first meeting is Tuesday, January 5, 2021, at 7:00 p.m., and then on Tuesday, January 19, you have a financial trends workshop at 5:30, and then a commission meeting at 7:00. Staff, as you saw in the report tonight, participated at the Volusia County Legislative Delegation Meeting on Monday morning in Deland. Both Brian and I were there. It was a very different format from years past because of COVID and very limited public speaking, but we did thank the legislature for their support of our airport road expansion from the business park into the airport. And we are done with design and should be putting pavement on the ground in the first quarter of this 2021, and we shared that news with them. And then, as you saw, that we have some priorities that we're seeking funding for. We recognize that funding will likely be limited, but we are hopeful that we can garner some of that money. The police department excels in community outreach, and Christmas is no different. in community outreach and Christmas is, is no different. They have conducted a number of different toy drives. The MRAP, the Philly MRAP, in two separate occasions, they received over 400 toys and almost $500, $500 in cash donations. Santa on Patrol had his last patrol before Christmas. Santa on Patrol is a way that when the police department are driving around and they see a child, they give a toy, or we've been notified by a family that someone has little means to provide that and we recognize them. This coming Saturday, shop with a cop at Walmart. The police department has developed a great community relationship with Walmart. They give the department $2,000 and they shop with 25 kids. The most touching part of that shopping with those children is that many of them want to buy gifts for their brothers and sisters or their family members and not themselves. So, I mean, it's, it's heartbreaking but heartwarming at the same time. So we're grateful for that wonderful experience that those officers get to have with those children. Sorry about that. We've had some increased exposure at city staff with COVID-19, not work-related, family-related, but I think we've seen cases going up everywhere. A hundred thousand doses of the vaccine were delivered to Florida today. I think there was some late-breaking news about some of those, but we're expecting that to be offered sometime in the next couple of weeks in Volusia County for our first responders. So that's exciting news. And you've heard us talk about fiber optic connectivity and you've helped us with moving that project along. Station 92 should be connected by the end of this week and then Station 91 on Beachside will also be connected. 92 is important because that's kind of where we moved our EOC and we've got all the equipment there. And to have a dedicated fiber optic line there is really critically important. We have a variety of other capital projects ongoing. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any of me.
Any questions for the city manager?
For the public record, when does the veteran intern gentleman start?
He'll start January 4th.
Thank you.
Great. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
No additional comments. Have a great night and a wonderful holiday.
Thank you, Claire. And City Attorney Randy Hayes.
No, sir. Thank you, Mary. Good night.
Thank you, Randy. And tonight, we start with Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. It is so nice to see so many businesses in Ormond Beach in the Christmas spirit. I also want to publicly thank Mr. and Mrs. Claus, Santa on Patrol. They are wonderful residents of the North Pole, but they do come down here every once in a while to Ormond Beach and they're two great people. With that, I'll say Happy New Year, good riddance to 2020, and good night.
Thank you. Commissioner, and Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. I have several comments tonight, so please bear with me. But I wanted to begin with condolences to Nan Hebner on the death of her husband Pete Hebner. Many of us have known Pete for, well, I've known Pete for decades. And he was a great guy, a fantastic attorney, a wonderful corporate citizen, as well as public servant through, well, I say servant to the community through various boards and, and other volunteer positions. And he will be deeply missed and had a very courageous battle with cancer for many years. Next, I had a question for, maybe for Stephen or the city manager regarding the Antares project. I noticed their construction fence is down. Do we know what's actually going on with that project?
Today, this planning director sent a notice that the building permit had expired. And so they give, they gave, they provided a list of all the things that needed to be restored. I think there, our way to get that resolved is through code enforcement. So yes, we're working on that, but we expect that there be little action by Antares.
Okay. And I was very glad to hear that first responders are going to get the vaccine because I noticed in all of the communication that I've heard nationally and in the state, within the state, that they talk about emergency room, you know, personnel, including, you know, not, not just doctors and nurses, but also all the attendants that work in the emergency rooms. But I thought, well, what about the police and fire? What about the ambulance drivers? What about, you know, they're, they're in, in contact with COVID patients even before they get to the emergency room. So I'm very glad to hear that that is part of the early, early distribution of the vaccine. I complimented the staff earlier on the legislative priorities and I see Brian in the back of the room. And Brian, I just, you did a great job on those write-ups. And then Kevin, I'm in one page, you know, with some pictures of each of the projects is very, very helpful, very nicely. Great job. And hopefully we'll be able to, you know, bring back some money for some of those projects. I wanted to talk a little bit about the A1A crosswalks. There was a public hearing recently at our Performing Arts Center. Sean Finley and I attended. Others of you may have attended online. We attended in person. And I was sort of left, I was left with a couple of impressions. Well, first of all, this has been a topic that we had talked about at TPO and that I had pushed for aggressively over the last year or almost two years to have more crosswalks like we have at Andy Romano and like we have in front of the grind with the RRFD, RRFB, RRFP. That's the flashing beacons, rectangular something, flashing beacons. RRFP is the acronym. Anyway, those are extremely effective once people know what they are and they figure it out pretty quick. The plan is to have five more of those between Granada and Millsap. Millsap is the road on the north side of Andy Romano Park by Tipsy Taco. What, what really I don't recall ever being talked about was the medians. So the DOT decided that there'll be medians on that entire stretch of A1A. And the medians will mean that you cannot make a left turn either way, northbound or southbound. What you'll have to do, there will be places, there'll be opportunities to make a U-turn. So if you want to go left, you'll have to make a U-turn and then do a right end to get to the place that you want to turn to. That's a safety issue. DOT has determined, and I guess safety engineers have determined that, you know, when you allow a left turn movement, it's dangerous. You know, the conflict points are increased. What I, what, what was apparent to me was that the, and has become apparent since that hearing, since that meeting, was that residents and, and businesses were not well-informed on this. The DOT did not do a good job of letting people know that these proposed changes are in the works. And the time, the timeframe for responding for public comment, I think, ended yesterday. I think it was December 14th. So I'm just, I'm trying to get the word out as best I can that this is what's happening. It's a $3.3 million project. It's going to change traffic patterns considerably, you know, if they, if they build everything that they're proposing to build, the way they're proposing to build it. The only place that you'll be able to make a left turn is at a controlled intersection. In other words, where there's a traffic light. And I think there's only one between Millsap and, and Granada, right? So, and interestingly enough, and I'm, I'm not trying to throw the, the Florida Department of Transportation or their consulting engineer that designed it, but one of the things that jumped off the page to Mr. Finley and myself was they didn't provide for a left out on our fire station. Station number 91, there's a median in front of it in their design. So if it, if that got built, which it's not going to, we'll make sure that doesn't happen. The fire truck would have to, to go north, it would have to make a right turn out of the station onto A1A, find a place to U-turn and then go north. Okay, so anyway. Next topic, beach.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but that's an important enough issue. I think we need to get the commission to weigh in on that because DOT, I think, will work with us if we have a unified front on what we want to see. Obviously, we have to be careful with what we ask for because it is, it is a safety issue. But I agree with you. I don't recall the medians being concreted, being part, I mean, it was sold as an RRFB crosswalk project.
It was a pedestrian safety project.
Correct.
It's ballooned into, you know, mission creep.
Right. And there's that access management issue and the engineers, I guess, put in a, just a ton of medians, concrete medians. The issue is you can't, you know, certainly a fire truck can't do a U-turn through a cut in the median. Some people told me that they couldn't and I thought, well, they're just maybe bad drivers. So I went and tried it and I couldn't do it without hitting the curb or have, it ends up being a three-point turn. Now at Aura down in Daytona, there's a cut. And if you're going fast enough when you start the U-turn, you can complete that without hitting the curb. And there's a light just south of that. So you can speed up and know that you're going to be able to make that turn, but there's a lot of places along A1A and Ormond that you can't. So that's, that's one of the issues. The other issue is the, in front of the hard rock, there is a direct walk across with a raised median in the middle, not the offset or Z-shaped thing like, like we have out here in front of the grind. I understand there's some reasons for that. They want you to walk across, turn while you're in the median, and then look at oncoming traffic and then turn again. Nobody does that. Everybody walks straight across and just steps over the curb because that makes common sense. And that's what is in front of the hard rock. It works great. It makes sense. If you're with a bigger group, they can jump up on the median, the raised median section that's 10 or 20 feet if they need to for safety. But, so I'd like to see all five of them in Ormond just straight across with a raised median and then not have the problems with residents and businesses on the other side, on either side, not being able to get through their normal driving patterns. And the one that's at Arlington Way is close to that Station 91. It's also south of Beachside Johnny's, if I recall correctly. It should be north, just north of Beachside Johnny's where there's, we don't, we don't own that parking, but where there could be parking. But the residents could walk across from there and get directly to that beach access. It would just make so much more common sense. But I think unless we speak as a commission and request that, it's going to be harder to get DOT to change that. So I don't know if anyone else wants to weigh in on that, but the, now's the time because DOT is making those decisions. Commissioner Kent.
I had a really nice meeting on Friday with Sean Finley and resident Dr. Mark White. Friday afternoon after I went to work. And let me, let me just weigh in on, on a guy that's lived there his entire life, myself, and have, has been advocating for 10-plus years for pedestrian crosswalks on A1A. I, I knew before Dr. White showed me the data that he had and the pictures that he had, which, you know, I love the pictures and the video that he had. If you drive a 2006 Toyota Tundra, because that's what I drive, you cannot do a U-turn today. Sean and I practiced it. And, you know, you, you cannot turn around unless there's no traffic coming. You're going to do a three-point turn. And in Daytona, where they have a dedicated lane for cars to do a U-turn, the picture that I was shown of the curb, it looks like there's a concrete monster who eats concrete or tries to, but the gouges, the damage to vehicles, the number of cars that have bumped up over onto the sidewalk, it's wildly dangerous and equally wildly inappropriate. I asked about the crosswalk that we have here in front of the grind and, and close to City Hall, where you go across and then you have to turn and hopefully face oncoming traffic and then go down. And when you looked at the design of what FDOT has for the five or six that they want to implement in Ormond Beach, all of them except for one do that. The one at Osceola Avenue, near Osceola Elementary, it's a straight across shot. And I said at that meeting with Sean, they, they all should be straight across shots. I personally like the, the greenery of, of those small little pedestrian crosswalks. If we, if we can have some grass, I like that. I just, I think it aesthetically is way more pleasing. And for whatever reason, it makes me maybe falsely feel safer. I can tell you all that my mother, who ruled our home with an iron fist, would not let any of her children cross A1A to go to the beach by themselves until they were 12 years old. Well, I was born in 75. That makes it 1987 for me. I got my first surfboard, a Nectar surfboard, 1987, from Atlantic Water Sports. And I fell in love with the sport. And I surfed, when I tell you 365 days out of the year, from the time I was 12 until I was probably 22 years old. And I would crawl, I will cross, I used to cross that five lanes of A1A and stop in the middle and then cross the other way. Well, I have a 14-year-old son and he wasn't allowed to cross A1A at 12. I made him wait until he was 14. And I made him go down and practice with me time and time again. And here's the new rule in the Kent household. Write it down. You don't ever, ever wait in the middle of the median. Because from the time that I was 12 until today, I am appalled by the number of people, and those of you listening online, I'm looking at a cell phone right now, I am appalled at the number of people that drive everywhere with their cell phones out and they are either talking or texting or browsing the internet. I don't know what they're doing. But what happens is you run over my kid and I hear, "I'm so sorry. It was an accident." Well, it doesn't bring my kid back and I'm sorry too. So I give you that little bit of long-winded peace because every single one of those rapid rectangular flashing mechanisms is extremely needed and warranted in Ormond Beach. I would also say that the one close to Magnolia Drive, next to Beachside Johnny's, I do believe needs to be moved a small amount to the north so that it lines up with the public pedestrian access to A1A. I'm sorry, to the, to the beach. The public pedestrian access to the beach. I think it needs to be moved down just, just a little bit. And then you've already heard it, but yeah, you can't, you know, you can't, FDOT, how well did you think this out? Because, you know, you can't put a concrete barrier in front of our fire station 91. And I would say 95% plus of all of the calls that come out of that station head north. It, it just, you know, somebody, somebody made a goof and, you know, we're all human and no one's perfect. But to me, that opens the door for city staff to say, the commission talked about this and so far, there's three of us, that do not want the concrete medians that impede the everyday traffic flow that everyone is used to. We do want the pedestrian crosswalks with the flashing lights. But this commissioner, this, this, this man that represents Zone 2, which is the area we're talking about, does not want the, the medians for all the reasons you've, you've heard before. And, and by the way, I said you couldn't do a U-turn if you drive a 2006 Toyota Tundra. I would say unless you drive a smart car, you're going to struggle and making that, that U, a U-turn on A1A currently. So my two cents plus an extra quarter.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I concur.
Commissioner Littleton concurs and.
I think always, yeah, safety's a priority and we need to keep our citizens safe, absolutely.
Is it fair to say it's five to zero? Does anybody not agree?
I think it's staff yours, you're allowed to clear. We'll convey that message.
Great. Thank you for that. And sorry to interrupt.
No, no.
Commissioner Selby, thank you.
No, that was great. I'm glad we're, I just wanted to say that it's interesting and I'm sure FDOT has data on this, but the, the, you know, U-turn versus a left turn, you know, which is safer. And a U-turn maybe is safer, but not if it has to be a three-point turn because now you're, you're in the, you're in the traffic, you know, and you're backing into both lanes. You're crossing both lanes of traffic when you do a U-turn. So, so I think our points are all very well taken. Also, and just in, Mayor, in response to your comment about how people use the crosswalks that have the, the section where you run parallel to the lanes of the road, it also gives the drivers in the, of the oncoming traffic and the second lanes that you have to cross when you get to the median, an opportunity to see the pedestrians, okay, versus if they're just shooting straight across. So I just, I mean, I'm not, so the, the three-point, you know, crosswalks are, are intentionally that way. There, and, and I, and I want to, I don't want to, I don't want this to sound all negative because we worked really hard to get the DOT to do this project, okay? And they got $3.3 million budgeted for it. And when they started, all of these crosswalks were mid-block. And I was like, I was very vocal about mid-block. I said, "When did you guys grow up? Didn't your mama teach you cross at the corner?" I mean, that's like, that's like 101, right? I don't think your mom would have said, "Oh, just cross the road in the middle of the block." Anyway, most of these crosswalks are now at the corners. They're not mid-block. And, and the, one of the other interesting things was that the materials that they handed out did not clearly indicate where the beach accesses were. So the pedestrian beach accesses were not easy to spot. And yet, anybody coming, you know, from the, from the peninsula going to the beach, what are they going to the beach for? They're going to go to, to the beach. So they're going to want to cross A1A. But you also have to think about the people who are staying on the beach side, east of, east of A1A, who want to visit businesses on the west side of A1A. So yes, I, I concur with the points that have been raised today. No, you know, no, no medians, yes on the crosswalks. And, and sincerely appreciate that. We are, we, the state of Florida and specifically Volusia County, one of the most dangerous places in the country for pedestrians, pedestrian vehicle accidents and fatalities. My next point is regarding beach driving. Today, there was a story, front page in the News Journal, our Volusia County Chairman-Elect said, or was reported to have said, it's not a quote, but Brower said, "He wants to not only restore beach driving to areas where it is prohibited today, but also to prevent loss of any other stretches of sand." So that caught my eye because we have a traffic-free zone at Andy Romano Park. And I, I personally think that's great. That's just my personal opinion. But I think it's great that if you go to the park, you can walk right out on the beach and, and you can get right to the water and you don't have to worry about cars. But he didn't say, I mean, if I take, if I take what he says or what he meant literally, he intends to see if he can get that eliminated. So I'm curious how you all feel about that because this is another one of those topics where I think we should let him know. I mean, my preference is that we would not eliminate the no-traffic area there. We would keep no-traffic by Andy Romano Park.
I'm going to stop you right there again, Commissioner Selby, because it's another great point. And that no-drive zone in front of Andy Romano Beachfront Park has been wildly successful and a huge benefit to that park. It's allowed the rebirth of Restaurant Row and that whole area to be as successful as it's been. And it's given a refuge for parents to take their children to a place where they don't have to worry, other than lifeguards maybe, or other county vehicles, don't have to worry about vehicles. And I think we do need to write a letter, not only to Chairman-elect Brower, but to the county manager and the entire county council, strongly requesting that they maintain that exemption for the Andy Romano Beachfront Park and explaining the reasons why. I think it's critical. I think our residents would be incensed if they learned that that exemption was going to be removed and there would be normal traffic lanes through there. But let's see how the rest of the commission feels. Commissioner, Deputy Mayor Persis agrees. Commissioner Littleton?
Sure.
Sure. Is any agreement with that? And Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Whose zone it is?
Yep. So, you know, you, you live and learn and, you know, your, your mind, the way you think about something changes here and there. And I would say 17 years ago, I would have told you that you don't take beach driving off of any stretch of the beach for any reason whatsoever. And I tell you this little quick story because maybe staff can, or I'll talk to the county-elect chair and tell him the story. But sometimes you witness something and it changes your mind. And, and I can tell you that this was 16 years ago and nobody did the wrong thing. In fact, everybody in this story I'm getting ready to share with you did the right thing. There was a woman driving down the beach going no more than five miles per hour. There was a guy named Troy Kent sitting on the beach with my family, sitting there paying attention, beautiful day in the afternoon. Back to the, back to the woman who was driving going no more than five miles per hour. She had both hands on the steering wheel. I was watching her. There was a mother with her child holding his hand. She was paying attention to her boy. The little boy was probably four or five years old and he was doing everything right. He was at the beach loving life. And they were standing there waiting for their car to go and the moth, the, the little boy saw a flock of birds land on the other side and he darted out of the mother's hand. I'm going to tell you right now, the boy had minor injuries and he was fine. But you want to talk about making my stomach go to my throat and watch this guy, I'm telling you, I could have almost beat Usain Bolt running to that child. You all look like you believe me. I could beat Usain Bolt. But anyway, running to that child to help and no one did anything wrong. But that vision has been in my mind and I implemented a change because then I had a son. And until he was old enough to understand and listen, I'm here to tell you, Commissioner, I didn't take my family to any part of the beach where there were vehicles driving. I, I support beach driving, but I did not want to witness what I witnessed before. So we would go to Tom Rennick Park. And that's where I, you know, said, you know, we've, we have to make sure that Andy Romano Beachfront Park is no driving in front of it. And it would be a recipe for disaster to allow vehicles to drive in front of that small section of beach. I'm adamantly against it. And at the same time, I'm adamantly for beach driving, but not in that area. And I'm only talking about that one because it's Ormond Beach and it's Zone 2. But, you know, I'm not on the county council right now. But, you know, I can, I can tell you that there's probably other areas of Volusia County where I would feel the exact same way. Whenever you have a park that can accommodate the number of people, which by the way, that was by design. There was a lot of effort put into the design and the flow of Andy Romano Beachfront Park to where it could accommodate a really good amount of people and at the same time not feel overcrowded. So absolutely not.
Yep. I'm with you on that, Commissioner Selby. Another, another home run for you.
Great. And that's five to nothing, Joyce. If you want to prepare something for my signature or send it yourself or however you want to do it. Thank you, Commissioner Selby.
One final comment, Mayor. And that revol, regards Avalon Park. Big story in the paper over the weekend about Avalon Park and moving forward. And, and, you know, look, I'm going to, I'm going to say it as directly as I possibly can. I think there is no bigger threat to the quality of life for the citizens of Ormond Beach than Avalon Park, period. It is a city on our doorstep. It's going to impact our city and our quality of life more than anything else. And I'm frankly, I'm shocked that there aren't more, that the groups that speak up about what we're doing or what the city is doing, aren't more vocal about Avalon Park and aren't paying more attention to this. And so to that end, I, I would, I'm going to make a motion. I think we need to know more about this. Need to know more about Avalon Park. I know I've had one meeting with staff and with outside council, we call a very preliminary meeting at best. But they're moving forward. This project is moving forward. And honestly, I don't, I know, I don't know very much about what our commitments are already that exist. I don't know a lot about what our options are. I don't know a lot about the whole process of how we can impact it and to what degree we can impact it. And I don't want to be the guy that, you know, five or 10 years from now, my neighbors are saying, "Who was on the city commission back then when that Avalon Park got going?" You know, I don't want to be that guy. I want, I want, I want to know and I want my neighbors to know what's going on and what our options are and what can be done. And so therefore, I'm suggesting, I'm going to make a motion that we have a, a workshop. And I think we may, we may need more than one because it's a big topic. But I'm going to make a motion that we have a workshop on February 16th, beginning at 4:30. That would give us two hours, you know, 4:30 to 6:30. And if, if that's convenient for everybody, I don't know. Troy, I'm not sure what your schedule is.
That's fine for me.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't know. That we, and that we begin wherever staff thinks we need to begin with getting up to speed on where that project's at and what our involvement is. And, you know, they, they have certain entitlements. And, you know, they're, they can build a certain amount, but they want to do a whole lot more than what they can do. And, you know, that, that, you know, if I was in Daytona Beach, I'd be all for it because it has virtually no impact on Daytona and they get all the tax base. And then we get all of the traffic. And that's really the single biggest, I think the single biggest concern for us is the traffic. But also the utilities, the water and, the water and sewer, you know, specifically the water demands that would be required for 10,000 homes and a million square feet of commercial. It's a huge, huge project. So my, I'm, I'm making a motion right now that we have a workshop and it's the second meeting in February, February 16th at 4:30.
Second.
Randy, do we need to waive the Thompson rules? It's not on the agenda?
Not, not for this item because there's no backup material with it. Perfect.
My only concern would be with the time. A Saturday would not be necessarily the best day for all our residents to be there. I'd rather see February 11th, maybe starting at 6:00 and going till 9:00 and do it in a place where we can have our residents show up in a socially distanced manner, whether it's Calvary, which is right out, out, out there by the project.
Did you say February 11th?
11th.
That's on Thursday.
I thought it was a Tuesday.
Yeah, Thursday.
No.
I'm, I'm suggesting prior to the, the second meeting in February. But, but Mayor, I like your idea. I like your idea of, you know, making it more accessible to the residents. I like that idea a lot. So I'm open on the date.
I'm just, I'm out of town from like the 11th through the 15th. So, and if we could avoid those dates, I would really appreciate it because I would love to attend.
What about like an alternate Tuesday? Instead of your meeting, you could meet on the 9th or the 21st, 23rd, I'm sorry.
For the workshop, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, because we have a, we have a commission meeting, the 2nd and the 16th. So you're saying they all?
23rd?
I'm okay with that also.
So maybe the 23rd and we'll have to see, you know, what other venue would be available.
Right. Can I sort of back it up a little bit? You know, the developer hasn't put forth, hasn't restated the comp plan changes that they put before the Daytona Beach City Commission or the planning board, you know, several months ago, or I forget how long ago. So if that happens, then there's legal stuff that kicks in with us, you know, that we need to be prepared for. And so I sort of don't want to do anything until they put that back forth in, you know, put that before the Daytona Beach Planning Board. You understand what I'm saying? Because it might tip our hand or it might affect our legal thing. Randy, if you want to weigh in on that, you know, that concern?
Well, where, where the project is at right now, as far as we can tell, and our planning director does a good job of monitoring the activities in Daytona. This project, as it is currently proposed, before it can proceed further, needs to undergo a comprehensive plan amendment in Daytona Beach. That's the first thing that happens. That proposal has not yet been presented to the Daytona Beach Planning Board. After that, it would go to, to the Daytona Beach Commission. At some point, I suspect it will be presented. Just don't know when it's going to be scheduled. If the commission is interested in holding a workshop, we can certainly pull some information together that's suitable for public consumption, if you will. We can, we can certainly facilitate that if, if that's your desire to do that. And by the date you're talking about, there, there may be some activity going on down there in any event. So we'll, we'll make whatever happen you wish to happen. And we'll certainly, you know, we're always available to work with our sister city and with the developer within reasonable limits. And, you know, beyond that, we just have to be prepared to respond accordingly.
Great. So we're good? The motion, as I understand it, Commissioner, you're okay with?
Yeah, I think if, if it's okay, I'd like to amend it to February 23rd.
Okay. What would your start time want to be?
Well, we don't have a city commission meeting, so maybe 6 o'clock, 6 PM? That would give people opportunity after work.
To get there and?
Yeah.
Be heard.
It's fine with me.
And the second, the secondary agrees?
Yes.
Tuesday, February 23rd, 6 PM.
And I'll, I'll just say for the public record, Avalon Park is total nonsense for the city of Ormond Beach. There's nothing positive, nothing for our residents with 10,000 homes dumping on to Granada Boulevard.
Anyone else want to comment? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign and we'll show that passing unanimously.
And in closing, Mayor, I just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, have a joy-filled Kwanzaa and, and Happy New Year because we won't meet again until after the first of the year. So, you know, thank goodness 2020 is almost over and 2021's got to be better, right?
Right.
Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Kent?
Chief Godfrey. Still here? There you are. I, of course, was not surprised that Ormond Beach was recognized by Crime Stoppers of having the best of the best in the area. And that's a huge testament to you, sir. You run a tight ship and you run an incredible police department, best in the business. And anybody that would question that, I would say, call our chief, set up a ride-along, if you're doing those right now with COVID or, or however they can do that. Because it is, for me, when I've done ride-alongs, it has been educational, it has been informational, it has been eye-opening, and it has been heartwarming. The personal connections that your officers have with residents in our community that need assistance blows my mind in a, in an extremely positive way. So our officer receiving those accolades tonight, you know, kudos to him, kudos to you, and Ms. Shanahan, kudos to, to you as well because you, you chose Chief Godfrey. And with that, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Deputy Mayor Persis?
Good evening, everyone. I too wanted just to mention something about the Crime Stoppers, Volusia County Officer of the Year, Ryan Mahalco. What a wonderful tribute to our city, and it was wonderful seeing his family here with him getting that award. And I just wanted to thank all of you for, you know, having part in his success. And it's funny, now that I've kind of gotten to know some of the police officers and fire, you know, firemen in the city, I'm driving around and I'll see an Ormond Beach police officer pull someone over, and I'm like, "Oh, I know who that is." And I'm like, "I hope they're okay." And I'm kind of like being a mom, like looking out for them. And the same thing with the firemen, because I see them out on the road too. So, you know, we are very fortunate to have the best fire and, you know, police department, I know, in the state of Florida, if not the whole United States. I'm really, I really believe that. They're just amazing people, they really, really are. And I love, you know, I love hearing, and I know Commissioner Selby always likes to talk about the police and fire equipment, you know, I like to talk about it too, you usually beat me to it, but it's just so wonderful to hear they're getting all that new equipment. I just absolutely love it. I want them to always have what they need to keep everybody safe. It's just great. And I just want to say, I want to thank the city and city staff for the virtual parade on Saturday. It was really a lot of fun. It was fun being in a truck going over the Granada Bridge and seeing the beautiful lights of the city. And we did get to wave to a few folks that were out and about, and so it was really, really a lot of fun. I just, I hope a lot of people see it and know that we are out there wishing everybody a very Merry Christmas. And also, Publix opened on Saturday morning at 6:50 AM. I think that was the time we walked through the doors. I was there with the mayor, and Joyce Shanahan was there, and several other people. It was just a beautiful, beautiful store. We're so fortunate to have it in our area. The manager of Publix was just delightful, and his wife was delightful, and I think we're just going to all be very happy with it. So, make sure you go out to the new Publix. And it's funny that also Commissioner Selby mentioned Avalon Park, because I was going to mention that tonight too, because I did actually go to Orlando to visit Avalon Park, and I was really, I was, I did not love it. I just, I don't know, I just wasn't happy at all with it. I think the developer, you know, wants to, of course, developers want to make money, we know that, but I think he has, he means well in his idea, but I don't see it for our area at all. I think it is going to cause us a lot of problems with traffic. All those people are going to come to all of our restaurants and come down our streets and go everywhere, right here in Ormond Beach, because we have just the best city. And I'm really glad we're going to have a workshop, and hopefully we can, you know, have a say in this project. And so, with that, I just want to wish everybody, you know, happy, safe holidays, please be safe, and hopefully in 2021, we're going to get rid of this virus and we can all be mask-free and, you know, get closer to one another again, and just really enjoy company of our family and friends. And so, again, safe holidays and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And Publix was fantastic. It was a little early Saturday morning, I mean, the sun wasn't even up yet, but to see so many people out there in line for the grand opening, congratulations to Publix, congratulations to the Trails and Tomoka Oaks and that surrounding area who missed their store for a year. It's wonderful for those residents, and that store is amazing. It's huge, it's beautiful. And the manager told us, you know, you'll never see a store as beautiful as it is on grand opening day, everything was just perfect. But I also had the opportunity to talk to the CEO of Publix, Todd Jones, and he grew up in New Smyrna, so he's well-familiar with our area. And I thanked him for the almost $14 million of investment in Ormond Beach, just about 11 over at the Trails and three here at the old Lucky's site. And just, you know, the improvements that they're making and what they're bringing to our area, our residents are truly going to enjoy. So, Deputy Mayor, thank you for being there, and it was a great, a great crowd, and it was wonderful to be, to be part of that. The veteran program, I was talking to somebody yesterday, and they were like, "That is brilliant." They were so excited about our ability to participate in a program like that. It's the International City Management Association's Veterans Local Government Fellowship Program. And the Veterans Local Government Management Fellowship, VLGMF, is a 16-to-20-week Department of Defense Military Installation Approved Career Skills Program that provides transitioning service members with management training and hands-on experience in local government issues, with the goal of preparing them for smooth transitions into local government careers. The program matches eligible and selected fellows with surrounding local government sponsors, which we are one, based on skills, education, experience, and the preference of both parties. The veteran receives his military pay for the full 20 weeks of the program. And the person that's been identified for Ormond Beach is a 12-year veteran with two years' active duty in Afghanistan, who has an interest in environmental and conservation issues. He starts, as the city manager said, on January 4th, and it's just, it's such a win-win, helping, you know, we love our veterans, being able to help them transition into, from military life to civilian life in a career that they are interested in and want to pursue. I'm really proud of our city manager for pursuing that program and lucky to have somebody of such great stature that's going to be joining us. So, with all that, I too want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a Happy New Year, and we will see you here on January 5th. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.